President.
Councilman Diana V. Salgado.
Here.
Councilman Roland Garza.
Present.
Councilman Raúl C. Ojeda.
Present.
Councilman Alfredo Carranza Jr. Councilman Alfredo Carranza Jr. Councilman James DeRus.
Here.
Councilwoman Elizabeth Elizalde de Calderón.
Present.
Councilman Alfredo Carranza Jr. Mayor, you do have a question.
Okay, thank you. I thought, I'm pretty sure he's on. Councilman Carranza, is your phone mute?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Okay.
So, City Secretary, please note that he is present. Thank you. We'll now proceed on to the next item in the agenda, which is a public hearing. At this time, I open Item 3A to conduct a public hearing and consider a request for plat 2001 by Abner Martinez, PE representing Alberto Rodriguez, who is requesting a replat establishing Lot 6A and 6B, Block E, Cantu Acres subdivision out of Lot 6, Block E, Cantu Acres subdivision. At this time, the public hearing is open. Is there anybody from the public representing that would like to speak on this replating? Okay, I hear no public comments. At this time, I will now close the public hearing. We'll now proceed on to Item 3A, the Ordinance 2020-045, an ordinance providing for the approval of a replat establishing Lot 6A and 6B out of Lot 6, Block E, in the Cantu Acres subdivision in Del Rio, Texas. Is there a motion from council at this time?
So moved, Roland.
Thank you, Councilman Garza. Is there a second?
Second, Raúl Ojeda.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second at this time. Council, I will go down the list. Councilwoman Salgado, do you have any comments?
I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
On the application for plat, on page eight, the application indicates that this property is not in the city limits. Is it or isn't it?
Hi, good evening. Janice Pocrant, City Planner. This plat is located inside the city limits. I don't know why he put that it's outside of the city limits.
Okay, who reviews the applications when they come in, Janice?
I do review the applications. They put down what they want to in the application, but I verify to make sure everything's correct.
Okay, because just about every application, I'm gonna have a question. And if, maybe in the future, if you find that something is in the city limits and they, or something is incorrect, would you make a notation for us?
Yes, ma'am, I will do that.
Okay, thank you. And that's the only question I had on this one.
Thank you, Councilwoman Salgado. Councilman Garza, are there any comments or questions? I hear none from Councilman Garza. Councilman Ojeda, any comments or questions?
No.
I hear none from Councilman Ojeda. Councilman Carranza, any questions or comments?
No comments.
Councilman DeRus, any comments or questions?
No.
Councilwoman Elizalde de Calderón, any comments or questions?
None.
Thank you all, council. At this time, since there's no comments or questions, we'll go ahead and take a vote. Councilwoman Salgado, are you in favor?
Yes.
Councilman Garza, in favor or against?
In favor.
Councilman, I'm sorry, let me, you're in favor. Councilman Ojeda, in favor?
Yes, I'm in favor.
Councilman Carranza, in favor?
Yes, in favor.
In favor. Councilman DeRus, in favor?
In favor.
Councilwoman Calderón, in favor?
In favor.
Mayor Lozano is in favor. I hear no oppositions at this time. City Secretary, is that noted?
Yes, sir.
The motion does carry. We'll now proceed on to Item 3B. We'll conduct a public hearing and consider a request for plat 2002 by Abner Martinez, PE representing Yosli and Itzara A. Flores, who is requesting a replat establishing Lot 6A and 6B, Block 6, South Del Rio Range 2, out of Block 6, Block 6, South Del Rio Range 2. At this time, the public hearing is open. Are there any that would like to comment? Thank you. We have a motion and a second. At this time, I'll go down to council. Councilwoman Salgado, do you have any questions or concerns?
Yes, I do.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Under Page 10, under our discussion, it indicates that this property is not commercial, correct?
Uh, yes, ma'am. This is Janice Pocrant. Yes, ma'am, they do. Under our commercial zoning districts, they are allowed to put any of the other uses, being residential, multifamily, or commercial, in the commercial zoning district.
Okay, but the lot split is a little under, by how much is it under the required 5,500 square feet?
In the C2B district, they are actually allowed to have a 1,500 square foot lot size. And so they could build a smaller house with that.
Okay, now, how is that going to work? You know the problems that we've had in the other subdivision that we talked about a little later in the agenda, as far as for lenders, for resale purposes, that kind of thing. You know, we're looking to possibly rezone another area because of the residential buildings that went up in that area and the fact that the owners are now having problems selling their homes or refinancing.
It could propose to be a problem. I have asked some of the realtors in our community to check with the Board of Surveyors, because there has to be other communities in downtown areas that have mixed uses and are able to get loans and to sell their properties. It baffles me that we can't figure this out in our community where other communities are thriving to have houses and multifamily in commercial zone areas.
Well, maybe their zoning may have something there, or it's all up to the lenders, you know, and there's no way realtors or we or anybody can control, you know, lenders. But I just thought I'd bring that question up. It won't be our problem, but since this property has that zoning, how is that going to work for the setbacks? You will still require, if it's gonna be residential, you will require the same setbacks, correct?
It will only require the... I'm sorry. It would only require the 10-foot front yard setback because of the zoning district that it's allowed.
You know, won't this create a problem down the line for other properties?
Um, I don't think that it would create a problem for other properties if they, because everybody is adhering in this commercial district to that 10-foot front yard setback. So I don't think that there would be an issue with anybody else unless they start to change the zoning from commercial to residential, and then you have a conflict with the setbacks.
Okay, 'cause, you know, like I say, I know that the problem has been there in the past, but I guess it'll be up to the owners then to worry about it. I just don't want anything coming back at us.
We, I mean, they could come at a later date and do a zoning change if they'd like to, to have it zoned for multifamily, which still would allow them to have a residential property on it, a house on it, but adhere to that 10-foot front yard setback.
Okay, well, I just, like I say, don't wanna come back and say that we approved something that was creating problems for them.
Yes, ma'am, I understand.
Okay, and again, on this application, you know, they went ahead and marked that they were not in the city limits. And I, that one I know for a fact is in the city. Okay, that's all I had on that one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Salgado. Councilman Garza, any comments or questions?
No, sir.
Councilman Ojeda, any comments or questions?
None.
Councilman Carranza, any questions or comments?
None.
Councilman DeRus, any comments or questions?
None.
Councilwoman Elizalde de Calderón, any comments or questions?
None.
Thank you, council. I have no comments or questions for the record. We'll go ahead and take a vote. Councilman Salgado, are you in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Councilman Garza, favor or opposed?
In favor.
Councilman Ojeda, favor or opposed?
In favor.
Councilman Carranza, favor or opposed?
In favor.
Councilman DeRus, favor or opposed?
In favor.
Thank you, councilman. Councilman Elizalde de Calderón, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
The mayor is also in favor. This motion does carry. City Secretary, is everything noted?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll now proceed on to Item 3C, conduct a public hearing and consider a request for zoning change appeal number 20-01 by Abner Martinez, PE, representing Del Rio Housing Facility Corporation, is requesting a zoning change from residential single-family occupants district, RSO, to local commercial district, C-1. Property description, Lot 8, Penn, Block 21, post addition. At this time, the public hearing is open. Are there any members in the audience that would like to comment on this public hearing? I hear no public comment. At this time, the public hearing is closed. We now proceed on to Item 3C, I'm sorry, yeah, 3C, Ordinance 2020-047, an ordinance in accordance with the Del Rio City Charter and state law providing for the rezoning of 1,001 West Garza Street from residential single-family and occupations district, RSO, to local commercial district, C1, within the city of Del Rio, Texas. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, Councilwoman Elizalde de Calderón.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Raúl Ojeda.
Thank you, councilman. We now have a motion and a second. Councilwoman Salgado, do you have any comments or concerns?
Yes, I did. I have some questions. Yes, now, as far as the part, I see where there's gonna be parking fronting Minahares, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Janice Pocrant, City Planner. There is gonna be parking on Miheta's, and they're also on...
On Broadbent?
Yes, ma'am, on Broadbent.
Okay, now, is there gonna be any sidewalks put in?
They will be required to put sidewalks in on the city streets. So on Garza Street, there would be sidewalks.
Okay, how about on Minahares?
On Minahares, where there would not be parking, there would be sidewalks. And this is a draft site plan that you're shown here. This has not been approved by city staff yet to make sure that it meets all the requirements, but this is their draft that they gave us.
Okay, now, the parking that they show on that draft, is that parking for all of the residents there?
Yes, ma'am. It would be, it's proposed for the residents and any caregivers. This would be elderly housing is what's being proposed.
Okay, now, are they, are they, does the project meet all ADA requirements, or before the total project is approved, will it meet ADA requirements?
Yes, ma'am. They would have to submit their plans, once they're complete, to TAS and get their approval for the project. They would also have to, of course, go through the site plan approval process and the building permitting process. None of that's been done yet because they wanted to get approval from mayor and council first on the zoning.
Okay, will they be coming back through us once they have everything completed, or does your office approve everything after this?
The development services and the planning and zoning would go through, along with fire, would go through and do the approvals from after this process is approved.
Okay, let me, just real quickly, now, what is this gonna do to the traffic on Minahares? I know that it's just the parking that's back there, but there were, what, about six or so parking spots?
Yeah, yes, there will be an increase to parking on Minahares from this request.
Because I know it's a rather narrow street out there.
It is, and the street is in need of some repaving. I don't know if all of the infrastructure has been replaced in this area or not, but when we did go out there, the street will need some improvements to it at the end of this project.
Okay, and let's see, as far as the units, I counted around 14. Is that, is that correct?
They've been trying to work between 12 to 14 units is what they've been talking about.
Okay. Okay, well, I just wanna make sure that they're gonna meet all the ADA requirements, and it just seemed like parking was gonna be a little ways away from the units, and I'm just thinking, you know, during bad weather or whatever, but I don't know if anybody else has any other questions on this, but that's all that I, I believe that's all that I had.
Thank you, Councilwoman Salgado. Councilman Garza, do you have any questions or concerns?
No, sir.
Councilman Ojeda, any questions or concerns?
No.
Councilman Carranza, any questions or concerns?
No.
Councilman DeRus, any questions or concerns?
No.
Councilwoman Elizalde de Calderón, any questions or concerns?
None.
The mayor has no questions or concerns as well. We'll now go ahead and take a vote. Just so that we're not always hearing the first councilperson in order, I'll go ahead and start with going from bottom up. So, Councilwoman Elizalde de Calderón, are you in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Councilman DeRus, in favor or opposed?
Favor.
Councilman Carranza, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Councilman Ojeda, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Councilman Garza, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Councilwoman Salgado, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
The mayor is also in favor. Ordinance 2020-047 does pass. We'll now proceed on to Item 3D, the discussion and possible action directing the planning and zoning staff to initiate the process for a possible city zoning case for the Las Quintas neighborhood and a portion of Chula Vista neighborhood from C1 to RM.
No move.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Salgado. Is there a second?
Second, Roland.
Councilman Garza has made a second. Any question, so let's go with Councilwoman Elizalde de Calderón. Do you have any questions or concerns?
None.
Councilman DeRus, any questions or concerns?
None.
Councilman Carranza, any questions or concerns?
None.
Councilman Ojeda, any questions or concerns?
None, sir.
Councilman Garza, any questions or concerns?
No, sir.
Councilwoman Salgado, any questions or concerns?
No.
The mayor has no questions or concerns. We're gonna take a vote to direct the planning and zoning staff to initiate the process for a possible city zoning case. All those, I'm sorry, all those in favor, Councilwoman Elizalde de Calderón, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Councilman DeRus, in favor or opposed?
Favor.
Councilman Carranza, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Councilman Ojeda, in favor or opposed?
Favor.
Councilman Garza, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Councilwoman Salgado, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Okay, the mayor is also in favor. The motion does pass. Thank you, council. We'll now proceed on to Item 4, citizens' comments on the agenda. At this time, there were no citizens that made any comments. I'll proceed on to Item 5, other business, Item 5A. And actually, because of the severity of the COVID-19 update, I'm going to go out of order in this section only. I will proceed on to Item 5C, the COVID-19 update with Emergency Management Director John Sheedy. Mr. Sheedy, if you could please give us an update to the council at this time. Thank you. This will help give us guidance for the other ordinances.
I'm here. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Standby. I think we got an echo. Can you hear me, council?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor, City Council, City Manager Wenowski and staff, thank you. Bear with me just a little bit. It's kind of an odd configuration here, but we'll get it going. Okay, so, yeah, so what we were gonna do was briefly update kind of what our status was. Of course, there's a lot of things going on in the COVID-19 preparedness area. The main thing that we've been working on, of course, has been maintaining and increasing our operations at the Emergency Operations Center. We had activated that center, I believe, on March 18th. We had activated to a Level 2, and since then, there's been, of course, ongoing collaborative and coordination efforts with almost all, or all of our state, federal and local partners. So we've been very successful in bringing everyone together. Our computers were set up by staff on Sunday evening, March 15th. Since Monday, March 16th, we have been preparing our community with LEPC meetings, weekly meetings. We're alerting everyone through AlertSense, our new mass notification system. We're getting really good response on all of our meetings at our EOC. Of course, one of the prime components that we had at our Emergency Operations Center was our call center, which is, of course, our COVID-19 community hotline. And up to today, we have received 191 calls on the hotlines, and that doesn't count additional calls that have been logged in regards to COVID questions that have come to individual departments. That's strictly the hotline. We have, from these calls, we're building a frequently asked questions sheet that was developed to help us kind of refine and coordinate our responses. I had some slides I was gonna show, but of course, it's difficult, but so we can kind of focus on the areas that we're getting the most questions, the kinds of questions that people are utilizing the hotlines to call for most. Of course, our PR division has created a COVID-19 webpage. They've been very active. They've done a wonderful job, both on Facebook and on our city website, so we try to keep that updated and maintained. We've actively posted many resources for the community online daily. We have CDC recommendation, list of community-wide resources. We're sharing of posts from Valverde Regional Medical Center, Valverde County, San Felipe Independent Consolidated School District, Laughlin Air Force Base and others. Every Tuesday and Thursday, we do have Steering Committee conference calls with a representative from each of those entities. We had one of those today, very productive call. We're using internal conference calls with department heads daily at, every morning at 8:30, sometimes twice a day. We'll have a follow-up call at 2:30, kind of contingent on how much activity is taking place and how much coordination is needed for that day. We are working on a resource inventory. We, our Steering Committee had agreed to put together a resource committee, and that resource committee met for the first time today, and they were able to, excuse me, yesterday, and they were actually able to develop, we had representation from the school and Laughlin Hospital, county and city, of course, and one of the primary things we're trying to do is create this comprehensive resource database so that, you know, when people are looking for respirators or hand sanitizers, or we have just a number of things, we're looking for infrared thermometers. We're building a list and then kind of breaking that all down about who all needs what, who all has what, and then we're scheduling, you know, pending deliveries and then looking at shortcomings to try and make sure that we're comprehensively addressing the resource needs of all of our agencies. We have created, I've added five users now to the state's STAR system, and the STAR system utilizes a technology where we can submit specific resource requests. I think there's five in the city now, and I believe a couple in the county that have been set up for that, so we're actively pursuing those resources. There's been, of course, coordination, working closely with city staff, Mr. Wenowski, Mr. Cook and others, all department heads really, trying to really focus on reducing the employees that are actively working at city facilities and city management, and of course, to focus on social distancing as, of course, we're all participating in tonight. We're monitoring with our conference calls, our surrounding counties and communities. Tomorrow, I believe, we have our regularly scheduled conference call with Middle Rio Grand Council of Governments, so we kind of look at what's going on in our general area. That's a very productive call as well. We do join in every day on the statewide conference calls. We have those every single day, and someone, at least one or two people, are participating in those calls. And I believe as far as our area right now, in our region, which is Region 8, we have 90 cases that have been identified, and two of those are in Atascosa County, 69 in Bear, four in Comal, two in DeWitt, four in Guadalupe, two in Ken... 69 in Bear, four in Comal, two in DeWitt, four in Guadalupe, two in Kendall, one in La Vaca, one in Maverick, one in Medina, one in Wilson and three in Victoria. So total cases in Texas right now is, appears to be 410. Of course, the numbers in the United States and the world, you know, they're, they're, they're jumping considerably now. We used to look and they would, they would increase by, you know, a few dozen to a few hundred, now we're increasing by the thousands. So in the world, there's 372,757 cases. In the United States, there's 44,183. I, I would like to talk about just, just in general, what's going on with COVID. Obviously, there, we've had some, some changes, our governor and our president are both working. We know that, especially at the state level, I know the governor signed an executive order for, that, that's gonna make some very important changes. An executive order that's gonna allow hospitals to increase their unused bed capacity without submitting applications or fees, that's gonna really speed that process up. That's gonna ensure that Texas hospitals across the state have adequate care capacity for COVID patients. Hospitals, the order also is, of course, postponed, many are aware that it's postponed all non-life-saving category, uh, non-life-saving surgeries, all kind of surgeries that are elective, all of those have been delayed, excuse me. Also equally important is, it has created a supply chain strike force. And so that is intended to ensure that all healthcare facilities have the supplies and resources that they need. This task force will secure all of the needed personnel protective equipment and food for medical personnel, first responders and those who may have contracted COVID-19. So those are some big efforts that have been made at the state level and we're hoping to see some good results from that. We are actively coordinating, again, just, just to go back to that point where I think the community should feel very good that we just had a tremendous collaborative effort from, from Laughlin Air Force Base Colonel Gentile, from, from the school with Dr. Rios, the hospital with Ms. Walker and her staff have been, have been phenomenal. The county with our, of course, with our county coordinator Roland Garza and, and Judge Owens. And everybody's working really, really hard and we're making, we're making some good progress. I wanna report really quick on the testing, as far as what the status is on the tests. I know there's always a lot of questions about that. Bear with me so I can pull that up. So currently, of course, we talk about, in our area, we only have one county, surrounding county that, that has a case and that's Maverick, and it's still just the single case. But when we look at tests, we know that Valverde County has tested 26 and we have received eight negatives, which means there are 18 pending. Also, visiting with Colonel Gentile, he has confirmed that Laughlin has tested 20 and they have received five negatives, so they have 15 pending. So we, we have, you know, a considerable number of cases that were considered, you know, they met the criteria to be tested and we haven't received information back on those. But I think it's important that we realize that sooner or later we are going to have our first case of COVID-19. And I think that by us all working together and, and taking these steps together, we've really created this, this infrastructure that, that kinda centers around our Emergency Operations Center. We've, we've, we proactively established these change of, these chains of communication. There's numerous groups that are working together. So when, when and if, and, and of course, it's gonna be when, we have our first case in cases of COVID, we're already out of the gate and, and, and working together as, as a unit. So we're not gonna lose any time, we're not gonna have to get ahead of that curve and I think we're gonna be in really good shape. We have some other information I can share, but I can share that with council members later just as far as what's going on, what type of calls we're receiving. We have a breakdown of all that information. So really, there's just so much stuff going on, it's kinda hard to start, where to have an update, but I, I think that's where I'd stop and, and take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sheedy. At this time, I'll go down in order. We'll go with Councilman Carranza, do you have any questions or comments regarding the update?
Um, not really any questions, I just want to extend my, to, to Mr. Sheedy. I just wanted to congratulate him for the, the job he's doing for the city of Del Rio and just to extend my appreciation towards him, 'cause I know he's been putting in a lot of work and I just wanna thank him for that.
Thank you, Councilman Carranza, Mr. Sheedy? Did you wanna comment?
No, thank you, of course, I really, I really appreciate that and, and obviously, as I just mentioned, I, I'm absolutely overwhelmed with, I've never seen anything like it and I, I had that job for quite some years and, and the level of participation that we have from everybody is, is really, it's, it's very encouraging.
Thank you, Mr. Sheedy, thank you, and, thank you, Councilman Carranza. Councilman DeRuth, do you have any comments or questions regarding the update?
No, my questions were answered during the presentation.
Thank you, Councilman DeRuth. Councilman Elisa de Calderon, do you have any questions or comments regarding the update?
I do, first of all, Mr. Sheedy, thank you so much, you're doing an amazing job. We appreciate you and all your efforts and all the teams that's involved at, you know, at, at the, 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 the committee that, that's spearheading all this. But I do have a question, any of the information that goes out, anything in Spanish? I know that y'all are doing the very best that you can, but like, do y'all plan to do any PSAs? On how do we get information to people that don't have social media?
I, I think that absolutely, that's a great question, Councilwoman. I think that we do have some work to do, I know we've talked about it several times. We need to refine and, and expedite our, our translation process. It seems like, we always talk about that, but by the time we get something translated, there's something new that we're trying to get out in English. So we need to work on that and, and, and get our Spanish translations much more effective and, and, and broad for all of our PSAs. And as far as not, as far as reaching out to people without social media, you know, that's something that we're gonna need to look at, of course, in the near future and even if it means that we have to begin some, some kind of door-to-door efforts to try and ensure that we've got many information out to everyone. I, I, we haven't looked at that much, but we certainly do need to.
Okay, that was it, thank you, Mr. Sheedy.
Thank you, Councilwoman Elisa de Calderon. City Manager Wenawski, to the Councilwoman's suggestion, is there anybody that we can designate, perhaps Mr. Michael Garcia, to help with the translation? Is that something that we can direct you to do?
Yes, I'm, I'm sure we have another employee that could help with Spanish translation and, and Michael is one of them. I, I do wanna say that I know radio shows have also been helpful in, in sharing the information to those who have Spanish as their first language.
Okay, thank, thank you, City Manager Wenawski. Councilman Elisa de Calderon, any other questions?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We'll now go on to Councilwoman Salgado, do you have any questions or concerns regarding the update?
No, I just wanna thank John for all his hard work and I think that we picked the best person for this job. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Ms. Salgado.
Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman Salgado. Councilman Garza, any questions or concerns regarding the update?
Uh, no, I, I just kinda question, but before I ask, again, I wanna thank John as EMC for the city as well as the support staff and everybody that's come together to assist in this, you know, difficult mo, time and, and obviously, you know, mayor as well, you know, for stepping up and again, moving along on this process and, and, you know, I wanna say that as a councilperson, you know, I, I support the, the efforts and, and wanna continue to support them and do all that we can. With that being said, Mr. Sheedy, can you tell us kinda what you, maybe you might need to help, you know, everyone else do their job internally, what, what we can do as a city, moving along to, to assist in any way and even to the citizens, to the community?
Well, I, I, I guess the main thing that everybody can, can, as far as the citizens and, you know, just try and, try and really pay attention to the information that's being released. We all know that, as you well know, sir, and, and many of us know, it seems like almost daily, we, we are chasing after two or three rumors and I, I chased one this afternoon and, and some of those take us a lot of time to kinda track down and determine, even though we're, we're 99.9% positive that there's no substance to them, somebody's gotta kinda go through the motions just to make sure. And so we just ask our citizens, what I'd wanna encourage our citizens in these kinda times is you hear so many things and I can assure you, we have a, we have, we have, we have a machine in place that as soon as something is, becomes available, some news becomes available, it is very quickly vetted and that information is shared with all the entities and likewise, they share it back with us. And I think we all have a common goal of getting out, you know, the most accurate information in the absolute quickest time out to the public because we realize sometimes if we don't act fast enough, then these things kinda take off like lava. But just, just reminding people that when you do read something, if you're not reading it, if you're reading it on Facebook, if you're reading on, on some news site, until you hear it from one of the entities, because I can assure you before one of these entities publishes something, it has been vetted. And as far as the cases of COVID that, that may be occurring in Del Rio or Valverde County, we're gonna be the first ones to find out, I know we were all, many of us were kinda shocked the other night and when, when the news was reported that there was a case and it was, it was kinda horrifying because we thought, gosh, after all this work, we've been really working hard to, to make sure that that doesn't happen. And to think that we would find out that way, it was gonna be very disappointing for us all because we would've felt like certainly we left our public, we let our public down because we missed something, but how could we have possibly missed it? We're supposed to be first to know and we will be first to know, that's the way the process is set up. So just pay attention, whenever something's going on, the city and the county and the school and Laughlin and the hospital, we're gonna release that information to you. And, and I think that the other thing is, I, I would just suggest that people be, get ready because we know that we're 99% positive that COVID-19 will affect our community. And it's, it's really nothing to be fearful of at this point. It's something that if we continue to practice all of the, the information that we've been given as far as social distancing and, and hygiene and, and protecting yourself and your family, we can, we can extreme, make, take extreme efforts to, to limit the impact. So I think, I just want everybody to realize that whenever you hear, if it's tomorrow, if it's this afternoon, next week, that there has been COVID-19, remember, not much changes. And we are working hard to, to develop a series of increasingly aggressive restrictions so that as soon as we hear, for example, that we're, we're having more cases surrounding us, as soon as we hear absolutely that there's a case in, in the city of Del Rio or Valverde, we're going to begin to take more restrictive measures. But I, I think, I think at this point, the strength is in community. The strength is in us all communicating with each other and with your, with your, your own family and friends and coworkers, try and maintain that calm, maintain that unity. And I just wanna appreciate, I think, extend my thanks one more time, I mean, to, to kinda mirror what we've done as agencies to work with, with all these entities and there are too many to mention. And I also wanna make sure and mention the, the Mexican consulate, who is working very closely with us and, and the Acuna Public Health. So we are monitoring the situation in, in Ciudad Acuna. And I guess, I guess that's the main thing, is everybody just kinda hang together.
Thank you, Mr. Sheedy. Councilman Garza, any other comments or concerns or questions regarding the update?
No, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Garza. Councilman O'Hara, any questions or concerns regarding the update?
Um, hey, Mr. Sheedy, uh, thanks so much for all your hard work. I've been there and I've watched you work. I think you're the man for it, so, um, thank you so much for, for your diligence and really your hard work. But I, I do have a concern or, with regard to the parks. Um, so, in fact, the parks, uh, as a whole, but regarding the use of park playground equipment, um, I know a lot of kids use it and, you know, they come in contact with it and they're out there. So I'm not sure if I can, but, but I guess for safety precautions and for prevention, for further prevention of, I mean, we don't have it here, but for the prevention of the spread of COVID-19 virus, is it possible for me to make a motion right now? Um, and if I can, I'd like to make a motion to prohibit the use of such equipment matching the timeline of the most recent declaration by the county of Valverde made on the 23rd of March, 2020. How do y'all feel about that? It would just limit that, that, the, the, the jungle gyms and, and the equipment that's at, at the, at the, at the parks.
If we are able to, this is Councilman Carranza, if we're able to make a motion on a second, I will second that motion and, and I probably would leave that up to the mayor to figure, and the city manager to figure out the logistics in making that happen.
Go ahead, go ahead, Councilman Garza.
Yeah, so, so John, has there, has there been any work done internally? I know that, you know, you, you've been in meetings with, with others and from a health perspective, not necessarily to, to put the hospital on the spot, but has some of the medical experts also in the community voiced some concerns or what are your thoughts?
Uh, in, in particular, like to, to playground equipment?
Yes, sir.
I know that we, honestly, it hasn't come up other than, I know the school has, has researched that and I know the school is absolutely prepared. Whenever, whenever they begin, you know, school again, they're, they've been looking at that issue and they would probably be somebody we could, we could, you know, refer to what in, what research they've done on it. I believe that the, the virus can survive for, it seems like it's, you know, several days on stainless steel and I don't know what variables would come in as far as heat or, or things like that, but I, I guess we would just have to try and implement, that's, that's, that's a, that's a complex question. I don't really know, it hasn't come up before just this moment.
Mr. Sheedy, if I may, Mr. Sheedy, if I may, City Secretary, can you repeat the motion, please?
So does, does the city, I thought the city's, city's declaration matched the, the order that was given by the county, does not, it does not list that? Are they not identical to that regarding the, the playground equipment?
I don't believe, I don't believe that, that particular issue is addressed.
And what was, and I don't think it was addressed with the county, is that my understanding as well?
I, I, I looked and I don't think it was addressed.
Okay, so, so your motion is to add that language into the declaration, is that my understanding?
Or however would be best, I mean, if, if... Or however would be best, I mean, if, if, if we can add it to the declaration, um...
Okay. Okay, so right now, as it stands, council, there's a motion in a second to add that language to the, to, to the declaration. Um, we will be discussing declaration in a moment, um, regarding that, but at this time, if you would like, um, we can continue to discuss the update, or, I'm sorry, let me recheck that. Let's go ahead and take a, a vote on that motion, there was a motion in a second regarding the park equipment.
I have a question before we take a vote, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
So it would be all playground equipment, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And, City Secretary, the reason I'm asking to repeat it again, because the language is, is requested to be added to the declaration, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so my comments regarding this, this comment, or this, 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 um, request by the council with a second, is we would still need to look at the feasibility of that, because you have to remember that there's a lot of manpower required as it is with the current declaration as it stands, and the more restrictions we impose on our population, the harder it is to, to, um, what's the word that I'm looking for, to enforce it by, by law. Anything that we put into the declaration is enforceable by law, and council, I want, I would like for you guys to remember that when you're making those recommendations to such a declaration. So pending this vote, we can look to possibly adding that, and then we can do the research if it's feasible for the city manager, is that my understanding? Legal, can we do it like that if we do look into the vote?
You can do it like that, Mayor. Um, the vote can just be that that's the council's request, because the emergency declarations have special authorities, but the city and the council always has authority to limit the, the parks. So you don't have to add it to the declaration, there's, there's a couple of ways how you could get that done, if that's what you want.
May I? May I? Uh, Raul?
Thank you, Councilman.
Yes, I just, uh, come in, I mean, I...
I think the intent was to still follow the social distancing requirements, to be able to still have some degree of exercise, and, and, you know, allow children that are accompanied by a parent to still be able to, you know, enjoy the, the outdoors to the degree that they can. Uh, however, you know, there is a stipulation in place, obviously, with respects to, uh, limits of groups of ten or less, and then at the same time, you know, if, if parks are populated, within it defeats the purpose in general, you know, altogether. So, I mean, I, I favor a, a similar, uh, you know, intent, and, and I think that that's definitely something, you know, pledging forward, if we can all agree that that's a, you know, that, something that we wanna collectively do, um, then gives you the power, Mayor, and, and, and staff to be able to institute that accordingly.
Right. So, Councilman Garza, Councilman Ojeda was, was also trying to make a comment, go ahead, Councilman Ojeda.
So my idea is, I mean, whether, I mean, however we see it best, um, it could go into the declaration, and I'm not sure if it can just stand alone. Um, but the timeline, if it were to be alone and not in the declaration, it would just stand alone, if possible, for the same time that, uh, that the declaration is made for.
Okay, any other comments or concerns?
Mayor, this is, uh, Councilman Carranza. I think, I think I would like to, to, to separate this from the declaration that's already in place, I know there's been a lot of work put into that. Um, and I, I would like to, um, assign the task, um, I know the mayor's really involved with this, along with, uh, Mr. Sheedy and, and the city manager, and let them come up with something for the city as far as the playground equipment in the city parks.
So, Councilman Carranza, are you? My question now is...
I want it to be understood, this is not, not closing down the parks at all, we're just concerned about the children being on the playground equipment. So, um, it, it, having said that, I'll rescind my second.
Okay.
I don't know exactly in what sec, which order to go, but I will, uh, so that we can change that.
That's appropriate. Okay, so there's currently a motion, Councilman Carranza did give his, his, his concern. So let me go back to Councilman Ojeda, um, what is your current concern regarding your motion as it stands?
So, I mean, it's, it's, it's just to prohibit the use of equipment at the parks, um...
So I guess my question is, do you, are you still proceeding with your motion, is my question?
Oh, okay, okay. Um, yes.
I, can you please be, speak into the phone clearly, yes or no, you're proceeding to proceed with your motion, yes or no?
Yes, I am proceeding with my motion.
Counsel, is there a second regarding Councilman Ojeda's motion? I do not hear a second at this time, so the motion does not carry. So, we will go ahead and take the Councilman Carranza's, uh, concern as far as delegating it to myself and Mr. Sheedy, the Emergency Management Coordinator, to facilitate the request, and if needed, we will update it in a declaration. If we can work an ordinance, we will do so as well. Um, legal, is that something that's appropriate as far as legal action goes?
That's appropriate as well, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Councilman Ojeda, do you have any other questions or concerns regarding the update?
No, that's it, I mean, I rescind my motion then, so...
Right, right, it didn't carry. So, okay, so now we are at, let me see, we are at myself. So, uh, Mr. Sheedy, I just also wanna commend you regarding your efforts for the, the Emergency Operations Center, I think that you're doing an outstanding job, keeping us all informed, keeping us on the loop, and I do appreciate your update. And unfortunately, the, the dire circumstances, I just wanna emphasize with the council, that we need to be advocates for our community and ensuring that we are also practicing social distancing, that we are telling our citizens to practice that as well. It does not mean, um, congregating, it does not mean having parties or get-togethers or anything of the sort. Um, our, our vulnerable popu, population, um, is, is pretty striking, the, the amount of, of persons that would be affected by this COVID-19 virus. Um, it's my understanding that it's no longer amount, no longer a question of if, it's more of a, a question of when, as far as these tests goes. Um, you know, when I talked to Mayor of Eagle Pass, they had only tested five persons, and they came back with one positive. So, we've tested far more and have had far more negatives, but the numbers are beginning to rise up as far as testing goes. And again, Mr. Sheedy, thank you for your, for your, for your update. If there is no other comments or concerns, I'm gonna proceed on to the same topic, other business, item five A.
Mayor?
Yes, sir?
Mayor, if I could just, uh, one more thing, I, I wanna, I also wanna thank, I know that, um, that you and the county judge, Louis Owens, um, the county's EMC, who happens to be one of our council members, Roland Garza, uh, have put in countless hours, but most importantly, the cooperation going on between all the entities, including the school district, including the hospital district also, it, I think, I just wanna mention, I think in our times of need, the city of Del Rio, uh, does come together as one. And, um, and, and I just want to, uh, congratulate everybody for all the hard work, uh, they've put in, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Carranza, that's much appreciated, and yes, it is most definitely a group effort. With that being said, again, I will proceed on to item five A, the ordinance 2020 dash zero four nine, which is an ordinance extending the mayor's declaration of disaster. Counsel, you were emailed the ordinance, um, it basically lists the same exact language that I proclaimed last night, uh, the exception would be the, let me see, it would be approved for today, and I believe the county did extend theirs to the sixth. Uh, Mr. Sheedy, can you add, can you comment on that? Do we know?
He's coming into the room, one second. Can you repeat your question, Mayor?
Mr. Sheedy, was the county's approved to be extended through April sixth, is that, is that my understanding?
I, I believe that they had, hadn't they, Mayor? I believe that they were, that we were, we were trying to get them both to, to match on April sixth.
Okay, is that correct? Is that correct? Councilman Garza?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so Councilman Garza, um, uh, I'm sorry, council, so the, they, my, my suggestion would be to mimic the counties to continue the, the extension for April sixth, 2020. Um, I believe there's expires, um, in the evening, is that right, at eleven fif, that does, uh, if I'm looking at this, eleven fifty-nine on April twen, on April sixth, 2020, is that correct, Councilman Garza?
Yes.
Okay. So that would be my recommendation as far as the extension and continuing up until April sixth, is that we mimic the counties? Um, and that would be my comment as far as this ordinance goes. So I would put into motion to, to extend the, the current declaration as it stands with those, with those comments and edits. So there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Well, we do have a second by Councilman, Councilwoman Salgado. I'll go ahead and go and order. Councilman Salgado, do you have any comments or concerns regarding this declaration and the ordinance 2020 dash zero four nine?
No. Mayor, can I have to really...
Yes, ma'am.
So the, the ordinance that was emailed was not completely identical to the, to the, um, to the county's. Um, there's that, but there's, so you got that, like you just discussed, and then that one provision at the end of section one.
Say that again.
So there's the date, says you just discussed, the full discipline, and then at the end of section one, um, you've got exhibit A that has the measures, and at the end of section one, there's an issue on sick leave, and the city's language is recommended to be a little different than, um...
Okay. So, but, but, so that, for that purpose, um, the majority of it mimics, so, let me rephrase that, so council, the majority of it does mimic as far as, but the, the recommendations for the sick leave portion, it looks like it's omitted, is that my understanding legal? City, uh, City Attorney West?
It's not omitted, it will change slightly.
I don't see the, I don't see the, I only see is, um, you know, it's printout's not printed. Is that where it discussed FMLA, FMLA leave, is that portion that you're adding? Okay, so I do see that. Okay, so, council, do you see where that change was made?
Not sure.
It is right before definitions, it is item L.
Is that where it reads additionally, the mayor instructs all employees to remain at home, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes. So with that, so with that, the, there was a motion, there was a second with these changes, and the changes also included the dates, right, so that we can match this, the county's, correct? Correct, City Attorney West?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so again, we do have a motion, we do have a second. Uh, Councilman Salgado, I believe I was asking if you have any questions or concerns regarding the declaration as, uh, with the, with the additional edits.
Right, that includes any, any additions or corrections by our attorney, right?
That were made today, correct, yes.
Yes. Okay, no questions.
Okay. Councilman Garza, any questions or concerns regarding this current declaration?
No, sir.
Uh, Councilman Ojeda, any questions or concerns regarding this declaration?
No.
Councilman Carranza, any questions or concerns regarding this declaration?
None.
Councilman Deruz, any questions or concerns regarding this declaration?
I have one comment, not that it will really affect this evening, but in the section on if someone is found positive, they are quarantined, um, at some point, we need to clarify, what is the trigger for them to come out of quarantine? There's nothing in there that talks about a period of time, or they need to be cleared by a doctor, you know? So, going forward, we need to clarify that. That's my only comment.
Thank you, Councilman Deruz. So, Mr. Sheedy, and I can further discuss that language, uh, Mr. Sheedy, did you take that note?
He has stepped away from the room.
So, uh...
He, he's here, he just walked this way, so I, I will be able to address that with Mr. Sheedy. Yes, yes, go ahead, City Attorney West?
Which section are you referring to, Mr. Deruz?
I don't have it directly in, in front of me, I haven't found the section, uh, to give you a specific number yet, but I think the mayor knows the section I'm referring to.
Okay, 'cause the reason I'm asking is I'm not aware of a quarantine order here. Um...
Councilman Deruz, I believe, I believe the question can also be interpreted as far as like the person requiring to stay home, when can they be released from home, is that, is that, does that suffice as well?
Um, I'm looking for the specific...
I am, I don't see it. I see, uh, exhibit A, letter H.
Oh, I got it, it's, uh, okay, I got it, okay, that's what I needed.
Okay, which page?
Eight, there it is, okay. Which item was it? It's eight, on, in the very first section, if someone in a household has tested positive, the household is ordered to isolate at home, the members of the household cannot go to work, school, or any other community function. Okay.
I just think we need to clarify that, because that, that's basically saying they're quarantined forever, the way it's written.
So, Councilman Deruz, it's noted for myself, and Mr. Sheedy and I will further discuss that. Um, City Attorney West, did you, can you, you, you got the note as well, right?
I do, I've got it, thanks.
Okay, perfect, so we're all, we're on the same page. Councilman Deruz, any questions, are there any additional questions or concerns regarding this declaration?
No, sir.
Councilwoman Elizalde Calderon, any questions or concerns regarding this declaration?
None.
And I, myself, do not have any additional questions at this time, there was a motion and a second, since there's no other questions or concerns, we'll go ahead and take a vote. I will go, I, I'm in favor of this declaration extension, so that's my vote is in favor. Councilwoman Elizalde Calderon, are you in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Councilman Deruz, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Councilman Carranza, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Councilman Ojeda, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Councilman Garza, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Councilwoman Salgado, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Thank you, counsel, this motion does carry. Will now proceed on to ordinance twenty, sorry, you know what, I just wanna make one additional comment, I just wanna thank you, counsel, for the continued support regarding this declaration, and, and as, as you all know, information does come rather quickly towards my, towards myself and towards, um, EMC, Mr. Sheedy, and, and there's a lot of moving pieces, and I just really wanna convey the message that I really, I really thank you all for the support, especially after tonight's extension of the declaration of disaster. And, um, I will continue to update the city manager so that he can distribute the information as it comes my way, and I wanna thank you again, counsel, for your support. That being said, will now proceed on to ordinance 2020 dash zero five zero, an ordinance amending the policy manual of the city of Del Rio, Texas, amending the city of Del Rio policy manual. I'll go ahead and make a motion in favor, is there a second?
Second.
We have a count, we have a second motion by Councilwoman Salgado. At this time, I'm gonna put up for questions or comments, Councilwoman Salgado, any questions or comments?
No.
Councilman Garza, any questions or comments?
No, sir.
Councilman Ojeda, any questions or comments?
None.
Councilman Carranza, any questions or comments?
None.
Councilman Deruz, any questions or comments?
No.
Councilwoman Elizalde Calderon, any questions or comments?
None.
I have no additional comments or questions. Okay, we'll go ahead and take a vote, I'll begin with myself, I vote in favor of ordinance 2020 dash zero five, five zero. Councilwoman Elizalde Calderon, are you in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Councilman Deruz, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Councilman Carranza, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Councilman Ojeda, in favor or opposed?
Favor.
Councilman Garza, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Councilwoman Salgado, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Thank you. Uh, so this motion does carry, ordinance 2020 dash zero five zero does take effect. Will now proceed on to finance, item six, one, information updates, item one A, the briefing update on utility billing concerns, are they currently available?
Yes, this is City Manager Matt Wodowski.
Thank you, sir.
So I have a few things to share about this utility billing update, um, there were about thirty disputed bills since the, um, meeting at the Civic Center, and of that current list of disputed bills, I'm aware of only two customers that have unresolved, uh, disputed bills, even after being offered the average, uh, consumption rate of their two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen months. Um, at present, we're not aware, if there are other disputed bills, we're not aware of them, or they haven't contacted the city. As far as payment plans, at present, there's approximately twenty customers on payment plans, uh, like all customers, they should be paying their current bill, however, we're not asking them to pay any additional amount... Uh, like all customers, they should be paying their current bill, however, we're not asking them to pay any additional amount at that time. If they do so, it's their own choice. Uh, a few things we're not doing currently, we're not charging customers the online convenience fee, this was removed on March twentieth. Uh, we are not charging late fees, we are not disconnecting utility customers due to non-payment at this time, we're not disconnecting customers if they have a disputed bill. However, if a customer on their own requests to be disconnected, then we'll honor the customer's request. As far as the Weaver audit, uh, we, the Weaver company has been sent approximately eighty percent of the data they've requested to do their audit, and MIS, the city's MIS department is working to provide them the remaining twenty percent of the data they've requested. Um, the meter read dates, uh, the meter read dates do match on the utility bills, and this was corrected, uh, since the February twenty twenty bills. I will, uh, share with the council and the public that the Weaver report that they presented on, on February twenty fifth, uh, did state, and I quote, "The increase in customer complaints received by the city during the April two thousand nineteen and May two thousand nineteen time period appears to be primarily related to extended billing cycles, which likely caused confusion and increased the likelihood that customers would submit complaints to the city regarding high consumption." So I know that having the meter read date, and that's the end of the quote. I know the, uh, meter read dates matching on utility bills, uh, being corrected since February twenty twenty is a, is a huge step to what caused a lot of confusion, I believe, in two thousand nineteen. As far as staffing, uh, seventh meter reader was hired and has been working since March ninth. Uh, a water department employee has been reassigned to the utility billing department to assist with meter changeout and, uh, leak checks. And in addition, we converted two seasonal part-time meter reader positions into one permanent part-time position, and they'll be used primarily to clean out meters, however, they'll also be tasked to assist when needed to, to read the meters. Uh, this position has been closed, and the interview process will begin as early as later this week. As far as the automated metering infrastructure, uh, at the March tenth council meeting, city council authorized staff to develop an RFP for the automated, automated metering infrastructure for water and gas meters, and staff began to work on this, uh, prior to our current COVID situation. And, uh, I know this is where we need to get to, uh, as a community, the meter readers would be sent daily, uh, automatically to the city. Uh, we could flag abnormal usage, uh, as, as early as daily as well, and the bills could be generated quicker, and customers themselves would have information online and more frequently. As far as the special utility billing committee, uh, the members of that committee were selected on March tenth at the council meeting. They were contacted via email by the city secretary about their selection. Uh, however, again, due to the COVID situation, the next steps of this committee have been delayed, and that would be, uh, to approve the committee via resolution and, and select an initial meeting date. I envision this, uh, committee to help us by, uh, reviewing and bringing recommendations to the following policies, our, our turnoff utilities due to non-payment, our payment plan policy, and our water leak adjustments policy, uh, in addition to just general customer service. Um, on the rate study, uh, we would like to do a full-blown rate study for water, gas, and sewer, with, uh, special notes on elderly accounts, um, and also the commercial and sprinkler rates, and the authorization to advertise for an RFP. For a rate study will be projected to be on an April city council, uh, meeting. Lastly, two other things, uh, an average billing option. We have contacted INCO to explore the option of an average billing option, which would help keep customers' bills at about a standardized, uh, amount throughout the year. I've seen this done in other communities and, and thought it was beneficial, so we are looking into that. And lastly, uh, staff is looking into the feasibility of low-flow devices, uh, which would, uh, slow the vol, volume or pressure, pressure in the water lines, which could be used as kind of an intermediate step before we shut off the water completely to water customers. Uh, and that concludes, concludes my u, update on the utility billing concerns.
Thank you, City Manager Winowski. At this time, I'll open up for comments or questions. I'll open it up with, Councilman Carranza, do you have any questions or concerns regarding the briefing on the update for the utility billing concerns?
No, I think you covered most everything I had.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you so much. Uh, Councilman DeRusse, any questions or concerns?
Not at this time.
Councilwoman Elisa de Calderon, any comments or questions, concerns?
None at this time.
Councilwoman Salgado, any questions or concerns?
No, probably later on in April when we have more details.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Garza, any questions or concerns?
No, sir, not this time.
Councilman Ojeda, any questions or concerns?
None.
Thank you, I have no questions or concerns. We'll now proceed on to item six B, the annual financial report for fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty nineteen. Council, you were emailed this update, I just want to make sure that you are aware of that, and it was my understanding, uh, that we will be getting a hard copy delivered to us, I believe, tomorrow, is that correct? City Manager?
Uh, we have Mr. Marlo Martinez on the line, um...
Okay, that's right.
They'll be mailing those, and we'll, we'll get those as soon as we can. If you want one sooner, we can print one out and get it to you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Martinez?
Yes, Mayor, Mayor, council members, good evening, Milo Martinez. Uh, yes, we're going to be mailing those out tomorrow to the, to the city administration, so they should be there in the next couple of days, but they do have the PDF copy that we, that we sent them today, that's the, the published issued copy. Um, starting on, to get started on my presentation, you've been getting my, our monthly updates as we're going along to get the audit completed within a six-month timeframe after your year-end, so which is March, uh, thirty first. The, um, the, I'm going to summarize, going, following my outline, I think it's the easiest. Uh, there's two different opinions in there, there's one on pages one through four, and then one on pages five and six. The, the, all the clean opinions are on pages one through four, and those deal with primarily the, the general fund, your debt service, capital projects, and your governmental funds, and then, uh, your internal service, that's where services are billed among the, the funds, and your fiduciary funds, those were all clean. The disclaimer of opinion occurred on the, most of your proprietary enterprise, which are your, your utility funds, water, gas, airport, bridge, and primarily, the problem that we've got is the, the fixed asset problem. But, uh, the, I know staff is working on a solution, and has talked to some consultants about looking to address that, so I would, um, anticipate that over the next year, that problem get resolved, and so that, that, you can, you can get to a, uh, a, a clean or unmodified opinion. But that's the, the issue there. So, uh, again, those are the opinions, it was, they're similar to what we issued, uh, pretty much identical to what we issued last year, um, on the, uh, nine thirty eighteen audit. Uh, we've got reports that we issue under the, um, single audit section, and that deals with the, um, we have to provide a report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters based on an audit of financial statements performed in accordance with government auditing standards. Um, and here, we've got, uh, three findings. Uh, last year, there were like eight, so I'll give you a scorekeeping in it towards the end, but anyway, they were, potentially five of those were cleared. These are still material weaknesses involved, material noncompliance, and they deal with your, what's called government-wide accounting, uh, in financial reporting and records. And so there's different levels of, of reporting that happens. The top end, where all assets and liabilities get recorded, and, and they, they, they use what's called full accrual accounting, that part still needs some work, so again, that, that, they're working towards that. The, um, uh, the other one dealt with the capital assets, which we've talked about that particular issue, and then the, the capital assets and some other items impact your reporting of your net position, which is critical to your bondholders and people that want to see what certain ratios and how much money you've invested in, in your capital asset. So those, once the capital assets, all these other items can start getting addressed and be in, in much better shape. Um, the, um, so you're, you've made progress, you've gotten items cleared, there's only, like I said, the three findings. Um, the, um, item number four, moving on to the independent auditor's report on compliance for each major program and on internal control over compliance required by the uniform guidance. This is for the federal funds, your grant programs. Once you have over three hundred, or three-quarters of a million, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars a year, then you're required to have a single audit. This year, we looked at three programs, the two bigger ones were the ones that deal with your water bonds, uh, the two different programs, the drinking water and the clean water. And so we've got the same issue there, so that, that's the repeat finding. The, uh, we tested, uh, another one of your programs, and that was clean, it was an unmodified, uh, opinion. And, uh, as far as, there were two internal control findings that deal, dealt with the, the grants, uh, one being the financial reporting that impacts the grants, and so the weaknesses that are, that are still there, and then just the compliance with the, the, uh, Texas Water Development Board. Their, their concern about turning in, uh, audits in late and those kinds of things, that area of compliance. So with turning in these reports now, that should clear that issue for the next year. So, and then in the schedule of finding the question costs, there were, again, five, uh, findings reported, there were no question costs, so that's good. There were not any items that said, but these appear to be items that we're going to question or that would be disallowed, uh, in our opinion. We're not the ultimate decision, but we bring, we bring note, but again, there were nothing like that, everything was fine in that area. And on the summary schedule of prior audit findings, as I mentioned earlier, you cleared five of them, there were ten findings last year, cleared five of them, and you still, you had five repeats. Uh, so there is certainly progress being made. We're seeing, uh, very much a, a positive, uh, forward-thinking, productive attitude by your staff. The tone at the top has been set, I think, City Manager, and then from there, uh, the, in the interim, uh, uh, Patricia Molina was there, and so working, we worked primarily with Fernando and Flavia, those are some of the people who worked. All the staff was very supportive, and everybody seemed to be a strong team, so they're making a lot of progress. They've fixed a lot of things, there's still a lot more progress that needs to be made, but we certainly, uh, wanted to commend them on the effort that they did to make sure that this deadline got met, and that, uh, changes were made, and that they upped their, their information and training, and we did, some of our training certainly helped them, gave them a, a better foundation, but they, a lot of it was just hard work and initiative on their part. So again, we want to, uh, thank all, Matt and all the finance staff, and I know Alberta's just come on to the team, and she was, you know, in the few weeks that we dealt with her, again, very positive, and she was giving us a lot of good, uh, feedback on the report, so we're looking forward to, to working with all of them. The last item deals with, uh, communication with those charges of governance, and these are areas that our standards want us to communicate in relation to the audit. The first one deals with the, um, we have to follow, uh, several standards for your audit. We have to follow the standards that the AICPA puts out, which is generally accepted standards in the US, the government auditing standards, and the uniform guidance. So all of those require us to do certain things, look at your controls, uh, the, the financial reporting, so it's all part of the reports that I've already covered, so we look at all of that, and, uh, and again, that's the, um, uh, and then also, we're looking if there's any, uh, major noncompliance that would be, have a negative effect. Again, there, though, that's been reported in our, in our reports that I presented earlier. The planned scope and the timing, the, the scope is all the operations of the city, all funds, all activities, and the, the timing, we got started in, um, in December, and so we're presenting the report today. So it's, uh, much, much improved turnaround there. The, um, again, because of the, the cooperation and the, the attitudes of the city really, really showed through. Uh, as far as, uh, significant audit matters, there's accounting, your accounting policies and procedures, there were no new ones adopted or anything that you did that was outside the authoritative guidance, everything was within the guidance. As far as difficulties, we did not encounter any difficulties, we got full cooperation, and I think just the transparency of communicating all the timelines and the requests and the needs upfront, and giving the status reports, I think was very helpful. I hope the reports that we provided you once a month were, were helpful to you also in, in, uh, addressing all of that. As far as, uh, um, corrected and uncorrected misstatements, there were, uh, adjustments that we made. Those are attached to this document at the end, all the different adjustments that we came up with. And so, uh, that, again, those, and those have all been posted to the books, and they're reflected in the numbers. There were no disagreements with management, everything was done in the normal course of us conducting our work and, and our relationship. Uh, we have management representation letter that's going to be dated, uh, the twenty-third yesterday, which is the date of the, of our report. Uh, there were no consultations by, uh, management seeking second opinions. Uh, there were no other audit findings or issues that would impact our retention or appointment. And other matters, there are other financial documents in there, schedules, et cetera, and our report clearly distinguishes which, which ones we are issuing an opinion, which ones we're disclaiming, or which ones we're not, and if we did, if we're not, what kinds of procedures we did, we may have agreed them, but the numbers agree that what's recorded in your financials, but we did not audit them, because some of those may be based on estimates that we're just not ca, able to audit, but it's what's, it's the norm, what everybody uses, and, uh, particularly when you're dealing with your pension plans and the post-employment benefit plans to record those liabilities. Um, the, um, so that's covered, as far as, uh, again, this is for the council's use, but again, it becomes a public document once you accept it. Uh, and as far as other comments or recommendations, for either for the current or from the prior year, we're not recommending any others other than what's already in our report under the schedule of finding the question costs, and, and then also the status that's in there from the prior year. That covers, uh, my presentation. Uh, any questions?
Let me go ahead and open it up for the council. Council, I'll begin with, Councilman Carranza, do you have any additional questions or comments regarding the report?
Uh, just one, um, Mr. Martinez, I believe, um, did, so we're, what was the deadline that we had for completing the audit?
The, the deadline was to get it done by the, I have to go back and look exactly, but it was sometime along this week, uh, that, um, to get it done so that it, by thirty first, it would be out, because that normally most, most agencies are issuing, and their, their audit reports are done and presented and available, uh, six months after their year-end, so...
Okay, so just along, we're, we're, we're okay with the timeline then?
Yeah, the, the, the water board wants it six months, they're a hundred and eighty days. The, the federal government gives you nine months, but we're going to be next week processing through what's called the, uh, data collection form, where we upload it to the federal system and, uh, and get that filed. You've got thirty days from today to get that filed, so we're going to get it done, uh, by the end of next week. And then, uh...
Okay.
We've got some other reports that we need to get done, probably in the next thirty days, which are the, to the, uh, uh, the TCEQ has a, a permitting process, and they want their reports. Uh, generally, they give until June, but, you know, we want to get those done quickly, so we're to, we've got it on the ti, I need to get back with the ma, the City Manager, but our, our outlook is to get it done, uh, no later than the end of April.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Matt, take care of your... Thank you, Councilman Carranza, any other questions?
That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Carranza. Councilman DeRusse, do you have any comments or concerns, questions?
No concerns, just, uh, comment, I appreciate Mr. Martinez, uh, and the kind words about the finance staff, uh, and, and how, how hard they worked to get this done on time this year. So really appreciate all, all, all the hard work from them, as, as well as Mr. Martinez's folks, so that's all I got.
Thank you, Councilman DeRusse. Councilwoman Elisa de Calderon, any questions or comments?
I have none.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Salgado, any questions or comments?
Uh, my only question is, will this be coming back after we've had a chance to review the report?
In, will it be coming back in, in what, what's?
Uh, for, for approval of the council, or, or will we have to approve the report at that, at any point here next month?
Well, je, I mean, generally, you would, you would, it, it's a, it's a process, and the legal may have a little more definition to it, but normally, it's, the report is, is, is final, and then you just accept it. But again, you know, any issue that you want further discussion on it, we'd be glad to, to follow up with it on, on...
Well, that, that's basically what I was talking about, you know, if we had any questions, once we look at the report, you know, if, uh, at, at which, at which point will we be able to do that? Because we're doing this over the phone, and we didn't have the report, uh, you know, to read before, uh...
Councilwoman Salgado, to, to answer your question directly, from my perspective, we can always add this information item and, and, and proceed at the next council meeting, if, I, I think that's, should be, if there's sufficient time to review.
Okay, that's...
At the council's pleasure, we're open to coming back and maybe having, you know, at your, at your work sessions or in the evenings, each, either one, and just, any issue, and just let us know what you want, then we'll get you more information.
Okay, well, I, at this point, you know, I'm, I'm fine with everything, but then I like to read everything to make sure that I didn't have any, any questions to ask, you know, so anyhow, but I thank you, Mr. Martinez, and... know, so anyhow, but I thank you, Mr. Martinez, and I will echo, uh, Mr. DeRusse's, uh, words also in regards to our staff, you know, they do work pretty hard, so thank you also.
Thank you, Councilman Salgado. Mr. Martinez, do you want to comment to that?
No, the only com- other comment I just, we just, myself and the firm, we want to express our thanks, uh, also want to thank, uh, Matt for all his hard work and communication and, uh, uh, again, we, we, the, um, all of that effort from everybody, the team effort to get to this point, to get it done and, and correct a lot of this, the, the issues that were before, so I think we see a lot of positive growth and, uh, and so we're happy with, with all of that. And again, I want to thank y'all for allowing us the opportunity to serve as your external auditors.
Thank you, sir. Councilman, Councilman Garza, do you have any questions or concerns? I don't hear no. Thank you, Councilman Garza. Councilman Ojeda, any questions or concerns?
Uh, no, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Ojeda, and again, for myself, Mr. Martinez, I want to thank you for your work and I want to thank you for complimenting our staff. And should, um, Councilman Salgado or any other council person need to speak to you in another council meeting, we'll be sure to advise you, um, as needed. Thank you again for your attention to this, uh, report, we appreciate it.
All right, thank y'all, have a good evening, be safe.
You as well, thank you so much. We'll now proceed on to the next item, City Secretary, item seven-one-A, the Ordinance twenty-twenty dash zero-four-eight. An ordinance suspending certain provisions of the Texas Election, Election Code allowing the City of Del Rio, who is utilizing the May second, twenty-twenty, uniform election date as their general election date and their special election date to postpone such elections to the November third, twenty-twenty, uniform election date pursuant to section four eighteen point zero-one-six, the Texas Government Code, whereas Governor Greg Abbott on March eighteenth, twenty-twenty issued a proclamation suspending provisions of the Texas Election Code to allow political subdivisions to postpone their twenty-twenty local elections. I make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-twenty dash zero-four-eight, is there a second?
Second, this DeRusse.
Councilman DeRusse made the second. Council, council, is there a questions or comments at this time? Councilwoman Salgado, are, do you have any questions or concerns?
No.
None, Councilman Garza, any questions or concerns?
No, sir.
Councilman Ojeda, any questions or concerns?
Uh, one simple question, I think I know the answer, but, um, nobody is allowed to file, right? It's just extending the, the date for election, right?
That's correct.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Ojeda. Councilman Garza, any questions or concerns?
No, sir.
Councilman DeRusse, any questions or concerns?
No.
Councilwoman Elisa de Calderon, any questions or concerns?
I have none.
I have no questions or concerns, so we'll go ahead and take a vote. Councilman, Councilwoman Elisa de Calderon, do you oppose or approve?
I approve.
Councilman DeRusse, do you approve or oppose?
Approve.
Councilman Carranza, do you approve or oppose?
Approve.
Councilman Ojeda, do you approve or oppose?
I approve.
Councilman Garza, do you approve or oppose?
Approve.
Councilwoman Salgado, do you approve or oppose?
Approve.
The mayor approves, the ordinance twenty-twenty dash zero-four-eight does carry. Proceeding on to utilities, item eight-one-A, ordinance twenty-twenty dash zero-four-two, an ordinance providing for the approval of replat establishing lot A out of lots one dash five and eight dash ten, block twenty-one, within the post addition in Del Rio, Texas. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. I'll second.
So we have a motion from Councilman Garza and a second by Councilman DeRusse. Council, are there any questions or concerns, Councilwoman Elisa de Calderon? Any questions or concerns, Councilwoman Elisa de Calderon? I hear none from Councilwoman Elisa de Calderon. Councilman DeRusse, any questions or concerns?
No.
Councilman Carranza, any questions or concerns?
None.
Councilman Ojeda, any ca- questions or concerns?
No.
Uh, Councilman Garza, any questions or concerns?
No, sir.
Councilman Salgado, any questions or concerns?
No.
Okay, I hear no questions or concerns from myself either, so we'll go ahead and take a vote, all those in favor, Councilwoman Salgado, do you approve or oppose?
Approve.
Councilman Garza, do you approve or oppose?
Approve.
Councilman Ojeda, approve or oppose?
Approve.
Councilman Carranza, approve or oppose?
Approve.
Councilman DeRusse, approve or oppose?
Approve.
Yeah, Councilwoman Elisa de Calderon, approve or oppose?
Approve.
The mayor does also approve, the motion does carry. Uh, ordinance twenty-twenty dash zero-four-two does carry. It was just brought to my attention that item six-one-B, um, we do need to make a motion to accept the audit, I want to make the motion to accept, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Salgado. Council, any questions or concerns before we take a vote, Councilman Salgado?
No.
Councilman Garza?
No, sir.
Councilman Ojeda?
No.
Councilman Carranza?
No.
Councilman DeRusse?
No.
Councilman Elisa de Calderon?
None.
None for myself, I make, um, we'll go ahead and take a vote, I make the motion, I'm sorry, I vote to approve, to accept the audit. Councilman Calderon, do you approve or oppose?
Approve.
Councilman DeRusse, approve or oppose?
Approve.
Councilman Carranza, approve or oppose?
Approve.
Councilman Ojeda, approve or oppose?
Approve.
Councilman Garza, approve or oppose?
Approve.
Councilman Salgado, approve or oppose?
Approve.
Approve. So the motion does carry to accept the annual financial report. Proceeding on to item eight-one-B, ordinance twenty-twenty dash zero-four-three, an ordinance vacating the replat which created lot three out of lots three and four within the Brinkley State Subdivision in Del Rio, Texas. I'll go ahead and make a motion for ordinance twenty-twenty dash zero-four-three, is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, Councilman Carranza made the second. Council, do you have any questions or concerns, Councilman Carranza, any questions or concerns?
None.
Councilman DeRusse, any questions or concerns?
No.
Councilwoman Elisa de Calderon?
None.
Councilman Ojeda?
None.
Councilman Garza?
No, sir.
Councilwoman Salgado?
No.
Okay, no questions or concerns from myself either, all those in favor, I vote in favor. Councilwoman Elisa de Calderon, oppose or approve?
Approve.
Councilman DeRusse, approve or, oppose or approve?
Approve.
Councilman Carranza, oppose or approve?
Approve.
I'm sorry, I meant to say in favor, so Councilman, Councilman Ojeda, in favor or oppose?
In favor.
Councilman Garza, favor or oppose?
In favor.
Councilman Salgado, in favor or oppose?
Favor.
And I voted in favor, so the motion does carry, ordinance twenty-twenty dash zero-four-three does carry. And I do apologize for saying approve, it started getting hard to say repeatedly. Now, item eight-one-C, ordinance twenty-twenty dash zero-four-four, an ordinance providing for the approval of a plat establishing lots A and B of the Los Campos Unit One subdivision in Valverde County, Texas. Uh, I'll go ahead and make the motion of ordinance twenty-twenty dash zero-four-four, is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Elisa de Calderon made the second. Uh, are there any questions or concerns? I have no questions or concerns. Councilwoman Elisa de Calderon, any questions or concerns?
I have none.
Councilman DeRusse?
No.
Councilman Carranza?
None.
Councilman Ojeda?
None.
Councilman Garza?
No, sir.
Councilwoman Salgado?
Yes.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, uh, my question is regarding the, uh, changes that were made by the, uh, uh, let's see, by the, uh, uh, let's see. Well, there were some changes made when they, uh, applied for this, uh, Janice may be able to answer them.
Uh, yes, ma'am, this is Janice Pelgranz, City Planner. Uh, they did, when they applied for the, the plat, they asked to, uh, name the plat a different subdivision name, and, uh, when I reviewed that, I did ask for them to, to keep the Los Campos subdivision name because that's what the area is known by, that's what the deed restrictions are, are by, and so, um, we did have that discussion and they did change it from, I think they originally applied for it to be the Sosseto plat, but, um, at the request, they did change it to Los Campos.
Okay, was that the only change?
Um, from.
Change it?
We did make some changes from when it was originally approved by Com- Commissioners' Court, they did not have the restriction on there that, uh, the one acre lot was restricted to non-residential uses, and because we needed to have that in there for the model subdivision rules, I asked that be included and so that's why it had to go back to Commissioners' Court.
Okay, and they. Okay, now they will be serviced by, by a well, is that, is that what I'm assuming here?
The thirteen point eight acres, the thirteen point eight acre lot is serviced by a water well and an onsite sewage system. The one acre lot does not have any water or sewer capabilities, um, for city services and does not, will not have, um, a water well or septic system on it, and that's why it's being restricted to non-residential uses.
Okay, now, th- this is in the county, correct?
Yes, ma'am, it is in the county, but in the ETJ.
Okay, so, uh, on the ordinance, where it indicates that it located within the city of Del Rio city limit.
Oh, I am so sorry for that mistake, I, it should have said it's in the ETJ.
Okay, and, uh, uh, let me just real quickly look over, now, what were the concerns? Cause I noticed that the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission went two to one on, uh, on their vote.
Yes, ma'am, there was one of the commissioners that had a concern, um, because this area has predominantly been built with residential uses, um, that commissioner had a concern that this plat was restricting the property to non-residential uses. The, the thing is, is, um, we can't zoning in the ETJ, but we, we can comply with the model subdivision rules and the local government code, and if it meets those requirements, we have to approve it.
Okay, now the one acre, because no requirement was made as far as, uh, you know, I gather that it's not until such time as they go to bill that you will require, uh, where they're getting their water from and, and also their, uh, whether it's going to be septic or what, cause I don't believe we have water out there and it being in the county, uh, th- those are concerns that I have.
Yes, ma'am, and, and they were also concerns for, um, the Planning and Zoning Commission and, and for staff, and so that's why we made sure that the plat is, is on there as, as required by the model subdivision rules that it is restricted to non-residential uses, so anyone buying that lot would not expect for it to be a residential lot and expect to have those utilities provided for them.
Okay, now that one acre lot, what, uh, because the plant is so small, Janice, I don't have a magnifying glass with me right here, what does, uh, what are the, I see that it's in a corner, but what street, what are the streets involved there?
There is wagon wheel is one of the streets, and let me pull it up.
Well, what, but that's.
Stampede Creek is, is right where the, the lot B, the one acre lot is off of.
On wagon wheel?
On Stampede, Stampede Creek.
Okay. And, but what the other, i- is anything there commercial?
There is a, um, welding shop that's down the street on Stampede Cree- Stampede Creek.
Okay, well, uh, like I say, the ordinance item needs to be corrected and that's a little bit of a concern, how about fire protection, what, uh, where, uh, will the well that these people have, will that suffice in the event of a fire? Is there any other, uh, water source out there?
Um, i- it is my understanding that the, the lots outside the city limits are serviced by the Valverde Volunteer Fire Department, and, um, I think they have a, a holding tank that they treat the fires with, so.
There's a holding tank then in the vicinity of, of the property?
I, I think that they have their own, their truck has the, the, the water in it to where they can treat the fires, and, and I, I, I could be wrong, but, um, that our, our fire trucks, unless there's city water out to the areas, our fire trucks do not connect to the water systems in the ETJ.
Yeah, um, uh, because I don't see where the water in, uh, in, in the fire truck that they use or even in one of ours, uh, if it's a pretty good sized fire, there's no way that thing is going to go, go under, but if the, if the restrictions or if the requirements are not there, there isn't much, I guess, that we can do about it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, uh, that item does need to be corrected then on, on the ordinance.
Um, yes, ma'am, we could definitely correct that whereas and make sure that it shows that it's in the ETJ.
Okay, that's, that's all the questions I have.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and amend my motion to include the corrections as stated, uh, per Councilwoman Salgado. Um, I believe the second was by Councilwoman Elisa de Calderon, is that correct, City Secretary?
Yes, that's correct.
Uh, so Councilman, would you also second that amended motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you kindly, so let me see where, I believe the Councilwoman was the last person with, with questions or comments, I don't have any additional comments or questions regarding the ordinance twenty-twenty dash zero-four-four, is that correct as far as, um, comments or concerns goes, City Secretary?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you, City Secretary Acosta. Okay, we'll go ahead and take a vote, um, I will be vote, voting in favor of ordinance twenty-twenty dash zero-four-four, um, let's see here, Councilman Carranza, are you in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Councilman Ojeda, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Councilman DeRusse, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Councilman Garza, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Councilwoman Elisa de Calderon, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Councilman Salgado, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Okay, the motion does carry, we'll now proceed on to item nine-one-A, Public Works, Ordinance twenty-twenty dash zero-four-zero, an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to award change order number one to the contract with the firm Alvin East Stock Contractor LLC for construction services for the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, TXCDBG Community Development Fund Water and Wastewater Improvements Project at the Hunter Subdivision, Del Rio, Texas. I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, who was that? Was that Councilman Garza? Councilman Garza made the second, we do have a motion and a second, any questions or concerns, I have none. Councilwoman Elisa de Calderon, any questions or concerns?
No, sir.
Councilwoman Salgado, any questions or concerns?
No.
Councilman DeRusse, any questions or concerns?
No.
Councilman Garza, any questions or concerns?
No, sir.
Councilman Gar- Carranza, any questions or concerns? I hear none from Councilman Carranza, Council, Councilman Ojeda, any questions or concerns?
No.
Okay, we'll go ahead and take a vote, I will vote in favor of ordinance twenty-twenty dash zero-four-zero, Councilman Ojeda, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Councilman Carranza, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Councilman Garza, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Councilman DeRusse, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Councilwoman Salgado, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Councilwoman Elisa de Calderon, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Okay, the motion does carry, we'll now proceed on to item ten-one-A, Assistant City Manager Ordinance, Ordinance twenty-twenty dash zero-four-one, an ordinance to expand hotel occupancy tax fund revenue to the George Paul Memorial Bull Riding. There was some information that was brought to my attention, I believe, uh, first off, Mr. Bobby Paul should be on the line. should be on the line. Mr. Bobby Paul, are you available?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so this, um, and for this item came to us, um, assuming that there's no additional extensions of declaration. So it is my understanding that Mr. Paul would like to get this approved, um, so that the event, in case it does happen in twenty-twenty, but that they could also, um, postpone it at a later date. And they are understanding if the event does not happen this, this year, that they will not be receiving the funds. So Bobby Paul, Mr. Paul, if you would like to expand on that, feel free to do so before we make a motion and a second.
Uh, yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, no, uh, thank you very much. You said about, you know, nobody, nobody foresaw any of this that's happened. And I just, you know, like to, like to see if it would be pre-approved and support, you know, contingent on the event actually happening.
Right. Okay. Um, I will go ahead and make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-twenty dash zero-four-one, an, um, an ordinance to expel hotel, hotel occupancy tax fund revenue to the George Paul Memorial Bull Riding. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, Councilwoman Elisa de Calderon made the second. So let's go ahead and go down the line. Uh, I have no additional questions or concerns. The questions that I did have were answered as far as the organization is understanding that this may, this event may need to be postponed, um, regarding the current situation regarding COVID-nineteen. Uh, so let's see. Councilman Elisa de Calderon, any additional questions or concerns?
I have none.
Councilman DeRusse, any questions or concerns?
One quick question. Uh, Mr. Paul, how, how far out would you make the decision? You know, do, would you need like two, three weeks out, uh, just so that we can, you know, know kinda what, what to expect?
Yes, sir. It would probably be, uh, res- well, of course, it's rescheduled, but it would probably be contingent on, see, the, the Pro Rodeo Cowboys Association, they don't even know yet what's happening. And oh, it would be, yes, sir. It would be like, you know, if y'all wanted it longer or shorter, but I, I ju- I wished I had the definite answer.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Councilman DeRusse. Councilman Garza, any additional questions or concerns?
I just had one question. Um, what is the amount for, the request amount?
Fifty.
Hello, were you talking to me?
Uh, uh, yes, Mr. Paul, what is the request? Oh, I can hardly hear you, Mr. Garza, but yes, the same as last year and the year before. It's only a couple times that I've gotten it fifteen, uh, I believe fifteen thousand. Okay, that's all I had.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Garza. Councilman Ojeda, any additional questions or concerns?
If granted the money, um, and it's postponed, I mean, who holds that money or when will it be granted?
Hello?
I believe that's a question for, uh, the Assistant City Manager, Mr. Chavez. Are you available?
Yes, and, uh, this is Manuel Chavez, Assistant City Manager. Uh, we can do it, uh, based on, uh, once the, the event is, is scheduled for, as far as releasing any funds, if, uh, council wishes to, to go that route.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ca- thank you, Mr. Chavez. Thank you, Councilman Ojeda. Uh, Councilman Garza, any questions or concerns?
No, sir.
Uh, Councilman Salgado, any questions or concerns?
Uh, my, uh, only question is, if this, if this is postponed, now, uh, will this, uh, will this be announced at the time that, uh, uh, that it's canceled?
Uh, yes, ma'am. It's rescheduled now. We, we don't, we're waiting also to hear from the Pro Rodeo Cowboy Association because they have like six hundred nationwide events and they have like forty, uh, or sixty main ones, division ones, and we're a division one event here, which is the top of the line, like Fort Worth, Houston, San Antonio, as far as riders and everything. And, and I would, I would know plenty in advance and, you know, be happy to do whatever y'all want me to do.
Okay, so this, this funding would be conditioned on the event being held in this year. Is that what I'm understanding, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. It would be held, if, if, if we were to distribute the funds, it must be held within this fiscal year, correct?
Okay, okay. That's, that's all I had.
And, um, I just, I wanna reiterate the fact that this is one of the most exciting events that we have. Um, it brings so much talent to our community, Mr. Paul. So I just wanna emphasize that the city definitely supports you and, um, we're hoping for the most optimistic outcome regarding COVID-nineteen for your event. Um, I have no additional comments or concerns. We'll go ahead and take a vote. Uh, I will vote in favor of ordinance twenty-twenty dash zero-four-one. Councilwoman Elisa de Calderon, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Councilman DeRusse, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Councilman Garza, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Councilman Ojeda, fa- in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Councilman Garza, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Councilwoman Salgado, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
The motion does carry. Ordinance twenty-twenty dash zero-four-one does carry. Thank you kindly. Thank you, Mr. Paul. We'll now proceed on to citizens' comments. There was no one that, that signed up this evening. We'll now proceed on to item twelve, the adjournment of this meeting. I move to adjourn the meeting at eight forty PM. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor? In favor?
Hi.
All of opposed? I don't hear any, so the motion does carry. We are now adjourned at eight forty PM. Thank you, council, for your patience regarding the teleconference. Uh, much appreciated. Have a great evening, everybody.
Have a good night.